... January fourth, 2024. We'll call, please.
Here. Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins. McAdams. Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Six present.
So all of them, McAdams let me know that he wasn't going to be able to be here because of work-related, and all of them, Perkins is literally on his button, so, there we go. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Public Participation. I'm going to do something just a little bit different, and I'm going to kind of kick it off here. First, welcome everyone for coming out. This is one of the cool things about local city government, is the voice of the people get to come out, attend a city council meeting, and allow us to hear directly from you. Many have already reached out, I think a lot of us have heard from many of you, probably many of you in the audience on this particular topic, and I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your participation in civic government. Thank you for coming out tonight, and I look forward to the discussion we're going to have with council, and I look forward to hearing the comments from all of you as well that have submitted a public participation application. So, this ordinance, I wanted to clarify, because we have to conduct city business, so if everyone is going to be talking during this, I'm worried that we might not be able to do that, so I thought I'm going to kind of summarize what this ordinance is really quick, and what the root of it was, and that might trigger some more comments, or it could trigger, if you have heard what you needed to hear, go ahead and just say, "I waive my opportunity for public comment," and then we'll go ahead and continue on with our discussion. So ultimately, this ordinance came about from, I'll call it the reindeer games of the governor of Texas. So ultimately, we all know Chicago is a sanctuary city, and the governor of Texas, to keep this issue top of mind, has been shipping up busloads of migrants, asylum seekers, up to the Chicagoland area to keep this issue top of mind for the state legislatures, the US and Congress and Senate, and the president, obviously. And he's doing a heck of a job at it. So Chicago originally, when they were ceding migrants, implemented an ordinance like what we're implementing tonight. If you deliver a busload of migrants unannounced, so they can't plan for it, that bus can be impounded, and that bus can be fined. What they were trying to do is have a method, be methodical essentially, on receiving migrants to be able to process them in the most humane way possible. When, I believe when Chicago actually established that, the governor then, to keep it top of mind, decided to spread chaos throughout the western suburbs, the colored counties, and including now Rockford, and what we're concerned about is the city of DeKalb. Ultimately, that's the root of this ordinance. We have a state that is playing games with human lives and children, and I have absolutely zero, zero tolerance for something like that, which is why this ordinance was created, and which is why we had a special meeting tonight for this. Why is this bad? I talked with the mayor of Kankakee, and you all may or may not be aware, but December 22nd, a busload of migrants was dropped off at a gas station along the interstate about 4:30 in the morning. They all had their bracelets cut off that they received at the border as asylum seekers. They were instructed, they were in Chicago, they were asked to leave the bus, and at 4:30 in the morning, the bus drove off. How they discovered this happened? State police found these people walking down the interstate, heading towards Chicago once they realized where they were. 4:30 in the morning, families on the interstate, walking along the side. That is absolutely ludicrous in my eyes. So why should we have this ordinance? This ordinance is about punishing the bus company that would allow something like that to happen. How in the world can you take a busload of people, people, families, and dump them like cargo along the side of the road? In my eyes, we need to go after them, we need to go after them with all the resources we possibly have. We'll issue a speeding ticket. We'll issue different violations for different crimes that happen. To let a bus driver or a charter company get away with treating people in such an inhumane manner? Zero tolerance for that, zero. So this ordinance is about going after the busing companies that are doing something like this. Why now? As I said, the situation like in Kankakee, but if you've been following the papers, this is happening everywhere. And I've been reaching out to all kinds of cities, but if you look quickly, Chicago implemented this exact same thing. Maybe not exact with the wording and some things, but ultimately, the spirit of this is there. Hinsdale, Lake County, Tinley Park, Waukegan, Kankakee, North Chicago, Highland, or Highwood, Grayslake, Buffalo Grove, this is just if you do a quick Google, right? This is what is transpiring all over northern Illinois right now, is this ordinance, or ordinances just like this are being implemented in order to make sure that we don't tolerate this from our busing companies. How does this help migrants? That's been, something that's been coming up. I've heard, maybe we're anti-migrant, we don't care, things like this. Look, the city of Chicago, although it is not perfect, the system they have for receiving migrants right now, but the city of Chicago has a plan. They have logistics in place. Probably what's the most important component? They have a voice. They have a voice at the state level, and they have a voice at the federal level. Chicago is continuously working on, how can they receive migrants? How can they get them the care that they need, the shelter that they need, the food that they need? But also, what's really important, and many forget about, communication. How can they find out where the migrants going? What is their final destination? Because I've heard illegal migrants, I've heard illegal aliens, I've heard a lot of that stuff. A lot of these are asylum seekers. They have, they've gone through the process to get into our country. They are documented, and they are waiting on their next hearing to figure out how that process can work to become citizens of the United States of America. Ultimately, Chicago continues to improve the process that they have as a designated sanctuary city to receive these particular migrants. So why don't we, I heard, why don't we take in migrants, right? Well, there's a lot to that. How is the city of DeKalb going to know how to handle the migrant issue? The immigration issues, the asylum-seeking policies that might be there? There's a lot of that that's just unknown, and that would take additional services for us to figure out. And why would we want to do that when the city of Chicago is a sanctuary city and is crushing it? She didn't say crushing it. They're working on it, but they are getting better and better, and at some point, they will figure out how to be a really well-oiled machine. So I also look at it as, I'm the mayor of the city of DeKalb, and you have council members here, and all of us were elected by, I assume, most of you in this audience are city of DeKalb residents. We have populations that we can't service right now as well. Our elderly have needs, our disabled veterans have needs, our low-income families have needs. I reached out to executive director of one of the largest social services that we have in the city of DeKalb and asked, "Is it possible that we could start taking buses of migrants?" Not even one bus. We had a fire years ago that, I think it was 23 people ultimately that were displaced. The burden on our social services was staggering. We cannot provide what we need to provide to our existing residents. How can we also provide to others that are coming to our community? I know all of you, we have a huge heart in the city of DeKalb. We want to do these things, we want to provide these things for people, but we also have a responsibility to those that we have here. And by taking in migrants in the city of DeKalb, we will not do anywhere near as good of a job as they will receive within the city of Chicago. We all know safe passage, right? Safe passage struggles, Hope Haven, our homeless shelter, full. Would I love to do this? I would. Can we? For what I'm hearing, for the professionals that we have in our community? We cannot. What's fortunate is, the city of Chicago can, and is, and will continue to receive migrants, and make sure that those asylum seekers are taken care of in the way that upholds who we are as citizens of the United States. I've reached out to state representatives like Yednok, and I'll wrap it up here, Walker, I can tell. State Representative Yednok, Kyker, State Senator Sue Resin, mayors of Rockford, Kankakee, everyone I can get ahold of to find out what is the best course of action that they have seen for asylum seekers and for migrants in our community. Across the board, every single one of them, get them to Chicago. So that's what we need to do. So I want to be clear. This ordinance is about going after the bus driver and the company that dumps people like cargo on the side of the road. That's what this ordinance is about. I've also been asked, and this, well, I'll summarize. I've been asked, and the city manager is going to elaborate some more in a second, but also, do we have a plan? What if it happens? Yeah, that's been a whole part of this conversation as well. And I'm absolutely proud that we've got a solid plan. We know if, all of a sudden, at 4:00 in the morning, there's a group of people at Casey's on Peace Road and Lincoln Highway, we know how we're going to house them, we know how we're going to feed them, then we know how to communicate, so translators, ready to go, right? And we've already reached out to charter bus companies to figure out what logistically it would take to be able to get them on buses, should they choose, but get them on buses, to get them to an Elburn or even downtown Chicago, and we've worked with the mayor of Elburn on this as well, because we're not dumping anyone anywhere. I personally will be there through the whole process. But ultimately, the cash that they're going to need to get a train ticket to go into Oglesby Station, which is one of the landing zones, is right there. I think the Greyhound, Oglesby, and Union Station. There's a landing zone right there, that's what the city of Chicago calls it, for the migrants to be able to be processed. We will do everything in our power to take care of them, shelter them, feed them, and get them to their ultimate destination, which is ultimately what they originally wanted. But if you're a busing company, and you're going to lie to them and tell them that you're in Chicago when you're in the cold some night in the city of DeKalb? No. Zero, zero tolerance for that. So that is ultimately why this ordinance came up. The reason why we wanted to have a special meeting really quick, and the reason why so many of you are here, and we've been scrambling to do this, is ultimately, this is an issue that is transpiring everywhere right now. We figured, we want to get this on the books as soon as possible to be able to punish those perpetrators treating people like pawns and being inhumane. We're going to punish them. And then, also to have the plan established to be able to get people to where they need to go. So that's my two cents. So at this point, I'll call people up for public participation, and the first one I have is Chris Luna. Yes, come on up to the podium, sir. I need everyone, when you want to speak, come up to the podium and speak into the microphone, because that way, we record all of our city council meetings, and it's also livestreamed. If you didn't know that, you can sit at home and watch our city council meetings. Riveting, a lot of times, sometimes it's exciting like this. But it allows the audience at home to be able to hear the questions that are brought before us. So Chris.
All right. Me as an immigrant, I got here when I was 10 months. I never got any help, my family never got help. Why would we help them, as the town? Why would we help them? My family suffered a lot, back in 2014 especially, when my family got divided. And Kristi, Kyler over there, I know her from Kish, she knows my story. Why would we help them? Like, why would we give them money to send them to Chicago? Where's that money coming from? Is that coming from us, our bills, or exactly, that's my question? How are we paying for their stuff, for their meals? We never got free meals at home. My mom had to work her, yeah, she worked in a pig farm that she hated. She worked there for a short period of time. She worked there to feed us, my brother and I. Why are we helping them? Can I get an answer on that?
We usually, public participation, just how it works, Chris. You give us the feedback. It's not a back-and-forth, and I forgot to tell you, and this is, no, 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 apologies also, Chris. Everyone, you have three minutes. This is the rules that we have in place, and we always hold people to it. But Chris, that is a conversation that is part of why I was saying, we can't take care of who we have now, and there's a lot more we need to be doing, for sure. But I don't know if you have additional comments as well.
Well, with Section 8, I mean, that's another thing that I have a big problem with as well. Why are those people getting help when they all are, most of them are US citizens that can get a job? My mom, of course, my mom and I, we're immigrants. We got our jobs, we have our work permits, but we can't get any help. So how can we help, how can we help those that have been here their whole life already as immigrants? As well, and that'll be all.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate you. What? Yeah. The clock isn't starting, just, I don't know who's controlling it in the back right now. We have the clock up there, just so people can see how much time they have left in case they want to wrap up and hit the main points. I cannot read this one, it looks like a Ginny L.A. something N? Is there a Ginny? This would have been the last one that just got submitted.
Gina or...
Oh, Gina? What is it?
Could be an Amy.
Could, yes. I'll go with that, yes.
It could be.
Could be, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is. I think it is an Amy.
And Amy, just as a reminder, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I understand, Mayor Barnes, that you and others are trying to protect our city. And I appreciate that, that's your job. But I am going to respectfully disagree about this, and I'm going to do that for several reasons. First of all, I truly believe the bus drivers especially, but also the companies are tools in a much bigger unjust and crazy system. Penalizing them is not going to make this go away. Secondly, as a member of this community's arts and action group, I have been learning a great deal about our history, and there are two chapters that I'm really not proud of. One is the fact that DeKalb was a sundowntown. The other is that in the 1920s, I believe it was 1924, there was a planned rally of about 12,000 people outside Sycamore. I don't want to repeat for our grandchildren an episode that brings more exclusion. I would be horrified, and I will also add that many, many of my Jewish people died during World War II because communities said, "We can't handle it, we don't have the resources." DeKalb is better than that. We should be having a different conversation. The conversation should be about how public-private partnerships, our faith communities, our university can work together and make this happen. That is the merciful conversation we should be having. Finally, I'd like to point out that we're rushing to make decisions here about something that will be a relatively short-term process or problem. Immigrants come, they settle, like my grandparents did, and in time, they open businesses, they pay taxes, they contribute to communities. We are talking about short-term stress on resources. We should be visionary, we should be looking ahead, we should be the best community we can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Dwayne Brown? Dwayne Brown? Yeah, no worries, Dwayne, I didn't know if you heard me.
There are 1.8 million immigrants in Illinois, making us one of the most welcoming places in the nation. That's 14% of the total population of Illinois. Texas Governor Greg Abbott is sending busloads of migrants to Chicago, Elburn, Joliet, Woodstock, Kankakee, and other cities. He is sending plane loads of migrants to O'Hare and Rockford airports. We had 302,000 illegal migrants encountered at the southern border in December alone. The cost to the taxpayers for law enforcement, housing, transportation, healthcare, education, food, and other expenses for migrants are overstressing local budgets, the state budget, and even the federal budget. Billions of dollars are being spent. This also poses a national security threat. The Border Patrol has terror watch lists to arrest individuals trying to enter our country. The question is, how many terrorists do they miss? The open border policy isn't working. Chicago Mayor Brandon Johnson is asking the federal government for funding for the migrant crisis in Chicago. New York Mayor Eric Adams is overwhelmed. Eagle Pass, Texas is destitute. Don't think for one minute it can't happen in DeKalb. DeKalb is not a sanctuary city, and let it be known. We have our own homeless people to care for. They stay at the library, the post office, the underpass, at the bike trail, and McDonald's. Have you ever encountered them holding signs asking for money near the Walmart store? We need an ordinance which would prohibit any illegal migrant from entering DeKalb by bus, by train, by airplane, by vehicle, by tunnel, by walking, or by parachute. Thank you.
Just very briefly, I have to depart at 5:45 for a pre-scheduled 6:00 meeting at the Junction Eating Place, and I anticipate more of this discussion, but wanted to let you know just in case someone's speaking as I had to leave. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that, I forgot to mention that, sorry, Alderman. Joe Gostiger.
Well, good evening, and Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your explanation for what your intentions are. I appreciate that very much, I appreciate providing transportation for people to get to Chicago where they can be better served. But I'm going to respectfully disagree and ask you to turn down this ordinance tonight, or at the very least, to table it, because I don't see the imminent emergency coming. I think your, I think your sense that people are arriving and we're ill-prepared to deal with that is an understandable one, but I don't see the solution as each and every municipality deciding independently. What I'm afraid of is that people at risk are going to be ping-ponged around from one town to another. Are we really going to ask that each little municipality in the state of Illinois, you know, come to, rather than have some sort of comprehensive policy about how it is that we handle people that are coming here for sanctuary that have already been approved for entry, that are not illegal, that have already been approved for entry into this country? I'm concerned about the rush that we're in tonight to enact this kind of in ordinance. As a member of the Human Relations Commission, I'm a little bit offended that this was never even vetted to us. If we're supposed to advise the city council on issues that have to do with human rights, that have to do with our community, I feel like, I'm surprised, frankly, that we never even had a chance to discuss this at all, or to consult with people in the community, with social service agencies, for instance, and with people that are trying to provide shelter and help in some way. So if nothing else, I'd ask us to slow down, because I'm afraid of the impact this is going to have, how this is going to frighten and this is going to chill people who are already at risk in our community. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. And again, just make sure we're all clear, this is only for buses that drop off a bus full of people with no notice. That's all this is for. All right, Catherine? Damod? I can't, perfect. Sorry, I can't read the writing, well. I need a new prescription, I guess.
Thanks for the opportunity to say something. I, oh, I lost my notes. I... Well, I only have three minutes, so I better get on it. I appreciate your concern about this, but I have a tendency to agree with Joe. I think it's an immediate act. And whether you agree with this bus, people are coming, and this is just the beginning, in many ways, you ain't seen nothing yet. I mean, the climate in the southern hemisphere is really driving people from home. They can no longer make it economically. And so I want to know, is what if they get a permit? Just questions. And would, and if they, if they didn't, if they got a permit, when would they let us know that they were coming? And how are we planning to address the advent of any people otherwise coming to town? Because I'm telling you, this, I think this is a perfect opportunity for some creative thinking about some ways that this community could imagine taking care of folks like this. And fortunately, we have new corporations in town, we're not alone in this struggle. They have lots of money. And they could certainly come together in some sort of cooperative agreement with the local ordinance and the local service agencies to provide service to folks till they get settled. And as far as understanding the policy, and I have to disagree about the Chicago part. I've been following that kind of carefully, and there are not very many people happy in Chicago with what's going on in Chicago. And you run the risk of our folks here who've, who are working at some economic disadvantage looking and saying, "Why are we going to do this for everyone?" Well, this is a perfect opportunity for us to think about doing it for all. And I guess, I just think it's an opportunity as opposed, it's an opportunity and a challenge. And that's always what you're interested in in life, isn't it? An opportunity to define some ways for us as a community to be welcoming, and at the same time, a challenge to figure out how to do it. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Sandy Lopez?
Hello. I also echo, I think this is a little bit, it's going too fast. I think you should table this for a bit, and just to reconsider this. This is something that is happening, this ordinance is a cookie-cutter template that has been passed around to different municipalities and different cities, and I think DeKalb, from what I've known from DeKalb for the past 30 years, DeKalb has done better, has always, you know, has improved since I first came here. And this, this makes me sad. I think about the welcoming proclamation of 2017 when we said we were going to welcome folks, and we were going to be a welcoming community. We never said sanctuary, that wasn't it. We were going to be welcoming, and we were going to open, you know, possibilities to immigrants, to families, to community members. And this is everything against that welcoming proclamation of 2017. This, while I understand we are against, you know, Abbott's plan in busing people and flying people, 100% agree with you. There is, that's not right, and he should be held accountable. But these people should not be penalized because of his actions. And I think by doing this ordinance, by passing this ordinance, you're giving a message that DeKalb is anti-immigrant and anti-migrant. And be very mindful, these people do have status. They are not here undocumented. They actually come to the border seeking asylum, asking for permission, and they actually have rights as well. And I have a document that I would love to hand to you, it's from, it's been created by Dr. Dana Rush from UIC that lists the difference between an undocumented person, an asylum seeker, refugee, you know, and gives you what, it tells you here, what they are afforded, medical, healthcare, what they're afforded, if they, at all, any type of, you know, assistance with cash, what they're afforded via education and work. These folks are coming with work permits, they have an opportunity to add to the beauty of DeKalb. They're not coming here with a handout saying, "Help me, help me," but we do have to point them in the right direction. This is an opportunity for DeKalb to learn their resources, to learn what we have, gather that, and educate ourselves on how we can help this population. And when I think about comments like, "What happened for me and my family?" We can't look at that, we can't be like, "'Cause I suffered, everyone else has to suffer." We need to lend a hand up. Whenever we get somewhere, we need to look back and pull people up, and not push people down. And I think the right to seek asylum for migrants, you know, they're coming, and it's violating their rights if we don't give them, you know, if we're not saying, "Hey, they've done what they've had to do, they've done their due process, let's help them out." I think sometimes, you know, we, we forget that every human being has the right to access basic needs, right? Food, shelter, we have that here that we could help them. And there's, yes, we'd have to look at the community resources, yes, we'd have to develop a plan, but here's the thing, no one's taking a moment to say, "Let's build a plan, let's educate ourselves." People are just saying, "Nope, not here."
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay?
All right, Will Fairchild? Can I pass, okay? Louis Amesquita. Luis Amesquita? You're going to have to tell me how it's actually pronounced, sir. Give it a shot.
Hi, Mr. Barnes, it's Amesquita.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you were close. As an immigrant myself, graduated DeKalb High School, went to Little John Elementary. I have seen this community grow, and I've seen it become more welcoming. And this proclamation and others similar like it aren't really expressing that. And especially for the community already here, the community that you guys already know. know, you know, it's sending a message of, you know, exclusivity. And you guys have a campaign of belonging, and that's something that's really not going or working with it. You know, there's plans being made to exclude people, but there's not plans being made to have those people become part of the community and belong. You know, I think this ordinance, there's good intention, I see it coming from the council, but there is many ways it's negative towards the community that is already established here, the immigrant community here, and towards potential people coming here, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.[645.38][645.38](APPLAUSE). Mark Charbonne.
My comments are going to deal with process for the most part. I'm not going to take a position either way on this, but first off, did we approve the agenda? I don't recall a vote to approve the agenda tonight, so this meeting may be out of order, if I'm not mistaken. We need to follow the rules of the Open Meetings Act precisely. Your comments also at the beginning of the meeting-
I thought we did, but if I didn't, I'll ask the recording secretary.
Well, I'm just saying, we have to follow the rules here. Your comments, special meetings have different rules than regular meetings, so your comments at the beginning do not comply with the agenda. You have to follow the agenda exactly. You cannot deviate. My comments deal also with the ridiculous process going on here. The city council has a special, a regular meeting scheduled on Monday. The question I have that needs to be answered is why we need a special meeting tonight when the city has a regular meeting already on Monday? What does the city manager, police chief, know about what may or may happen in the next three days? What sort of intelligence that busloads of individuals may be coming to town between now and Monday? We are rushing this. This ordinance has been basically, other communities have been doing this since December, so why didn't we have a meeting in December to discuss this? This is very much of a copycat measure, as far as I'm concerned. This measure is simply a political stunt on the part of the mayor and the city manager and reeks of politics. The public is very much aware that there are two individuals sitting in front of us that are running for state representative and just trying to make their political differences known. This is pure political grandstanding, what's going on here tonight. The timing of this ordinance, like I said, should have been, well, the question is actually, with April, May, and June being warmer months ahead, the weather's going to be nice, will there be enforcement going on during that time? I don't know. It's sad when I read that the mayor said he is concerned about the well-being of those coming to town. Really? Isn't this the same town that also closed its 24-hour warming and cooling centers? We don't have it anymore. This council got rid of those recently. There are problems with this ordinance. Basically, it's a money grab. We're looking for more assets. There has been no discussion as far as what to do with the funds that are collected, as far as the fines go. What are we going to do with the buses that the city seizes? Are we going to sell them? How will the money from the fines be spent? There is no information whatsoever in the backup of this ordinance. Are we going to be hiring new police officers? Have police officers been trained as far as how to deal with this? What sort of burden is that going to put on the taxpayer? What sort of training do the officers to make, I should say, what sort of training do officers have to make proper assessment of whether individuals arriving to town are non-citizens? Perhaps the police chief can address that. There's also other holes. Real quick here, buses can drop off people at the convocation center. NIU is a state property, so they can drop off people in Sycamore. In Sycamore, there is a bus that comes right to DeKalb, 50 cents, they can come to DeKalb.
All right.
So there you go. There's some more holes. Fix it.
Bill Feifman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And first of all, I'd like to say that I'm grateful that the council and the city staff is looking to be prepared, all right, for buses coming to this community and people coming off of those buses that need an enormous amount of help. So I do want to say that I'm in favor of the ordinance, and I appreciate your comments, many of which I would echo. But I do, I did read the Chronicle article, and other person, Zisada, commented that, or at least it came across, that she was against the ordinance, and she said she doesn't believe the city will be able to apply the ordinance effectively, and that is really saying, hey, we don't want these people. I have not heard that here. I have not heard people not wanting the migrants here, all right? You are trying to be prepared for the city, for some of the social service agencies that are represented here, and I also would agree that, you know, many of those social service agencies can't handle the load of cases that they currently have. You know, I had a friend that went to the ER two days ago. The ER waiting room was packed, not a place to sit. Had to wait two days in the emergency room before that person got transferred to a room. The people that are opposed to this ordinance, there is a lot to discuss, Mark, there is, and a lot to plan for. But you are asking permission to establish an ordinance that is going to make things just a little bit better. Place yourself in that position where these people get off that bus. They got little ones with them. What do we do now? What do we do now? And that story about the trooper finding them walking along the interstate is horrifying. It's horrifying. Don't criticize for trying to be prepared. Provide some guidance. Provide suggestions, and that's what, that's what they're asking for. Give us some, give us some guidance. And other person, Zisada, you talked about spending a lot of money enforcing the ordinance. Well, I have to tell you, from watching these other communities-
Okay, Mr. Feifman. You have your three minutes.
That is, okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.[1046.83][1046.83](APPLAUSE). Sarah Moses.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm in agreement that we need to slow down with this forward motion. We are certainly going to continue to see more migration as climate changes. That's not going to stop or halt or slow down in any way, shape, or form, so we do need to be prepared for mass movements of people. And I would just like to share the welcoming proclamation that is an ordinance currently in DeKalb, and it says, the DeKalb welcoming proclamation, this was signed into an ordinance on the March 12th, 2018, by Mayor Smith, and it says, "Whereas the vision statement contained in the City of DeKalb's 2025 strategic plan declares that DeKalb is proudly known for as a welcoming, safe, and vibrant city offering economic, educational, social, cultural, and recreational opportunities for everyone, and whereas the same vision statement states that diversity is valued and celebrated with all people treated with dignity, equality, and respect. And whereas the City of DeKalb honors its proud legacy of immigration from Baron John DeKalb, an immigrant who became the hero in the American Revolution, to laborers in the barbed wire industry, from the service and agricultural workers to scientists at our major research university, and all immigrants who have played a vital role in the economy and character of our city and continue to contribute to its vibrant future. And whereas the City of DeKalb discourages unlawful discrimination and strongly supports the treatment of all individuals regardless of national origin. And whereas achieving maintaining, maintaining a community that treats documented and undocumented immigrants with respect, dignity, is consistent with the public policy of the City of DeKalb and the principles upon which the United States was founded. And whereas the validity of DeKalb as an ethnically, racially, and religiously diverse city in the state of Illinois is built in part on the strength of its immigrant community. And whereas the cooperation of all persons, both documented citizens and those without documentation status, is essential to achieve the city's goals of protecting life, property, preventing crime, and resolving problems. And whereas Northern Illinois University relies on the contributions of immigrant students and staff to help create quality educational opportunities and a stable financial base, the university and its Board of Trustees have declared a clear public commitment to support all Northern Illinois University employees and students regardless of their immigration status, and the City of DeKalb is determined to extend this support beyond the confines of the university and to every corner of the city. And whereas the legislature and the government of the state of Illinois have clarified the role of state in support of immigrants in the Trust Act of 2017, and the City of DeKalb is resolved to support in word and deed the laws of our state of Illinois. And whereas the City, DeKalb Chief of Police, Gene Lowry, has stated federal authorities have the primary-
Thank you, Sarah. That's your three minutes.
Thank you.[1250.51][1250.51](APPLAUSE).
Derek Van Buren.
I will be speaking about Alderman McAdams. As you know, Alderman McAdams had a trial on December 19, 2023, for eviction. He didn't pay his rent. The judge noted that there is no dispute that Alderman McAdams failed to pay his rent, as Alderman McAdams said so in his answer. The judge issued an order that McAdams vacate the property by January 9. It should be noted that McAdams' lease was up on January 1st. Alderman McAdams told the judge that Rebecca Garcia was skimming from the rent. McAdams told the judge he had witnesses and other evidence. The judge asked McAdams if he disputed the Mount Oud, and he said he did. The trial will resume on January 30 at 10:30 a.m. for damages. It should be a good listen, it should be good to listen to McAdams' version. Alderman McAdams told the judge he couldn't get an apartment because it was political. McAdams also told the judge he had a roommate lineup with over an 800 credit score. When the potential landlord called Rebecca Garcia to check on him, she didn't give him a good review. Might it have something to do with his non-payment of rent in an order protection petition from last year? It seems like it's always someone else's fault. On December 27, I was walking out to my car from Hy-Vee. As I approached my car, I saw Alderman McAdams put in a grocery bag into his Jeep. I shouted at McAdams, who was parked 25 feet or so from me, that he should be supporting DeKalb taxes. As you know, Hy-Vee is in Sycamore. I got into my car to leave, and McAdams was at my window knocking on it. He opened my car door. I told him I would call the police if he didn't leave. He shut my door. He called me the racist N-word. He told me to get out of my car so we could settle this. What, with a fistfight? I asked him if he needed any moving boxes, he could go back into Hy-Vee to get some. When Pat Fagan moved in 2019, he resigned his seat as he moved to a new ward. I believe Alderman McAdams was on the council at the time. Will McAdams resign if he moves out of the ward like Pat Fagan did? Or will it take an action by city council like it took to get McAdams out of his previous residencies? First, it took an order protection petition as McAdams moved out just before the hearing, and recently it took an eviction order. It seems like McAdams doesn't know how to do the right thing. The council should be ready to swiftly declare the fifth ward seat vacant if McAdams moves out of the fifth ward. A comment on Bill Feifman's thing, he was saying that'd be nice to be prepared, and I agree with Joe Gaster there, where he said it should have gone to the Human Resource Commission so it could have been vetted. It's really pathetic when you rush through a unsupported ordinance that can't be supported and enforced. Thank you.
Jim Mason. Yes, you are the last speaker.
That's what I asked for.
We need a big finish.
See you later. Happy New Year. Okay, first thing, these folks that are on these buses, whether it's in Texas or it's in Chicago, they're violating Article 4, Section 4 of the Constitution. The President of the United States is supposed to protect us from an invasion. We are being invaded. We are being invaded now. And somebody mentioned these people get jobs. If you're an illegal and you're in here illegally, you can't get a job in the United States, legally, okay? So I'm in the real estate business, I know more about moving people around than anybody in the room, as you well know, and this is a crisis. This is a atomic bomb getting ready to take off. And I want to commend the council for taking this up. I mentioned it to a few people the other day, and they didn't say anything to me. Well, they're taking action. The last thing you want to do is let people on your property, because you'll have to file a 10-day notice to get them off the property, and it'll cost you thousands of dollars. 147. So I want everybody to understand, this is a legal thing, it's not an emotional thing. These people have to go back to where they came from so they can take care of themselves. Right now, it's causing millions and millions and millions of dollars in Chicago with that mayor. He doesn't know what he's doing, and he's dragging us down to it. He wants us to take care of this. So remember, the way the Safety Act in the state of Illinois is, when somebody comes onto your property, you call the police, and they can only put them on the sidewalk. So you've got a family of five or six, you've got people out there on the sidewalk, you're going to feel very uncomfortable. So the best thing you can, and everything, ma'am, everything I'm saying is true.
It was mentioned earlier that they're not coming here illegally.
It's, sorry, ma'am. It's his time to talk. Everyone gets their time.
I'm glad you did that. Everybody's illegal that comes across that border, and nobody can give them a safe space, and we got 1.5 million gotaways. God, you know what a getaway is? That's people that ran away from the police. This is the most dangerous thing that could ever happen to DeKalb or any other community. There's 8.1 billion people in this earth. Can DeKalb take a billion people? I rest.[1622.61][1622.61](APPLAUSE).
All right. Recording Secretary Scott, do I need to, do we call roll for the, or, sorry, did I have a motion in a second for the agenda? If not, I'll do that now.
No, it's going to die.
All right. So I would take a quick motion to approve the agenda as it is?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. Roll call, please.
Zisada?
Yes.
She called you. Oh, yeah?
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Sixi?
The agenda has been approved. Gen IMC, public participation, we did. And Agenda Item D, ordinances, first reading. Ordinance 2024-001, amending Chapter 51, traffic of the City of DeKalb Municipal Code to provide for the regulation of unscheduled bus stops in the city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a good set of exchanges. A lot of points have been made tonight that I would like to address, but it's not my purview to do that. I will fill in a few things, because I will begin by admitting that what's before you tonight, which is an ordinance dealing with a small piece of the topic we're talking about tonight, is not in itself an answer or resolution. It is a step in, is this me? How's it?
Yeah, it wasn't that bad out of a hum, so we'll see how it goes.
So let me begin by just clarifying for the record what the ordinance is about. It is by its title, an effort to amend the city code. There's a traffic code in that, and it is very, very specific to allow for the regulation of unscheduled bus stops. We haven't seen this phenomenon in the city of DeKalb. Typically, buses that arrive are coming to pick up or disembark passengers. Oftentimes, they're related to some educational or athletic event, but not always. And sometimes, it's people coming to this area as part of a larger group that is looking for a night in the area for whatever reason. But we know that, and somebody mentioned earlier, there have been several dozen cities that have experienced unscheduled bus stops, large coaches with anywhere from 40 to 60 people, depending on the size of the coach, who are trying to get to Chicago. That is their understanding, that is what they boarded the bus to do. And the bus trips are very long, they're sometimes 17 to 19 hours. sometimes 17 to 19 hours, sometimes more, sometimes less, depending on where they start. And so, if persons are summarily and without warning, basically, bus stops, okay, get out. Or maybe there's some back and forth, but they're being put in a place when they're, when the bus stops and they're disembarking, that they're not familiar with at all. It doesn't look like Chicago. It's definitely not Chicago. And what are they to do? Where are they to house themselves and their families, feed themselves and their families, take a shower, deal with maybe some illness advanced during their trip? No provision for that. I want to get to that piece because that's really what this is about. It's about what we together as a community can do to embrace and also tend to that need. The, what people are calling the migrant crisis is a phenomenon that has been going on since October of 2022. We are at a peak right now because in our area, we're mostly seeing in recent weeks, dominating the news in terms of the migrant crisis, that smaller communities like ours are having to decide what we can do to help. And what is, what is fomenting or creating this tension, this, I want to say it's a crisis just on the bus side, but certainly an alarming concern? Our bus companies are being paid by governments and through agencies that are being paid by the government to bring people here without a plan, without the means to help the local communities raise the welcoming, as people were saying here tonight, the welcoming substance, which isn't just goodwill, expressions of goodwill, but actual sustenance and care. So, companies that do that, the premise here is the companies that are going to do that ought to have consequences. Consequences here are fines and it's been pointed out, if it was just fines, I would agree. People coming from another state or a company is principally operating in another state could say, fine, catch me if you can. The biggest part of the consequences here is the seizure of the bus. So, what this, what this ordinance, so for people who haven't read the ordinance or thought about it, what the ordinance says is if people, if a bus makes an unscheduled stop anywhere within our corporate limits and has not filed a plan, and a plan has been accepted by the city and by its staff, then immediately there will be fines imposed. It's $1,000 a day per passenger that will get attention, but the bus will be seized as people have disembarked and there is some kind of embracing process by which people are then taken to safety and their welfare is tended to. The bus driver, it's not really the focus of this at all. The bus driver can call the boss and say, guess what happened? How do I get back? We're not attending to that person's needs here. But we're also saying the bus is ours until you will support us by reimbursing us for every dollar that we spend locally, not just the city, but others who have been engaged in the support of persons who have come here intending to go somewhere else. So, Bill Fyfins said earlier something I think is very true. So, it's incumbent upon me as the emergency services and disaster coordinator for the city of DeKalb and our staff, which are engaged in smaller urgent emergencies on a daily basis, fires and other things, to have a plan. But the plan in this case demands that we involve the community. And Amy spoke to that. But right now, the community is not organized for this in terms of actual cohesion of a working group, people who have volunteered, committed to do this together. And we don't have corresponding resources to do that. So, what do we do? Do we wait for a bus to arrive? What is our procedure? So, we thought, we thought it prudent. And we've been talking about this for three to four weeks. Weighing the experience of others. This is not a cookie cutter ordinance. There are some common elements here, but the seizure of the bus, the higher, the higher fines are to give the companies a moment of pause when they're, when they're going through their plan, which is pretty cynical, which is dump people, drop them off, whether in that fashion that you described, Mayor, or even, you know, they do it at a police station or they do it at the convo center. It doesn't matter. People will have no idea where they are and what is expected, what they can do. So, that is something we're also, so what would we do tonight at 2:00 a.m. if a bus came? Have we thought about that? Yes, we have. Now, that's not in the ordinance. That's, that has to do with community planning and emergency planning. So, all of our department heads have been engaged with me. We have engaged, we have, we have contacted 37 local agencies, social service agencies, churches and others, and have asked seven questions. So, is your agency willing to assist with migrants? Everybody who responded, and typically not everybody responded, but we know they're, they're likely to in time. Does your agency have Spanish speakers? Does your urgency, does your agency have funds available to assist migrants? Now, interestingly, the responses to these were being a Y for yes and an N for no. A lot of N's here because local social service agencies have been hit for three years. If it wasn't COVID, then it was a high inflation of the last 18 months, which have cut into their reserves, if they had reserves, and made it very difficult for them to commit funds. But they're willing to commit their hearts and certainly their minds at least. Does your agency have space to house migrants? All no's with two exceptions. Does your agency have resources available to assist migrants? If yes, what? And that's a mixed bag. Most people said, yes, we can assist in some fashion. Does your agency have hotel vouchers available to assist migrants? Generally, no. What services does your agency offer to migrants? And then there were some fairly long explanations, which are heartening and very welcome. Finally, any additional input you would have us consider? And I think those, those few who responded to that in detail said, yes, we need to have community meetings where we will organize ourselves. What we're seeing right now is not the same as a tornado hitting this town. People would come out. There'd be, there'd be so many people, the, the local police response would be, hey, we've got enough right now. We're going to get organized here. Let's see what we can do. And we've got a lot of first responders here taking care. We don't have that. A lot of people are still feeling, we're not touched by this. It's not going to involve us. My hands are off this. But you're hearing tonight that people are saying our hands should be on this. Okay. What is the plan expected of the bus company? They are expected to show how we, or how, how they will fund 30 days of support for the migrants that are on their bus. 30 days. You don't get an approval on your application unless you commit to that. Okay, words on the page. What do we know? The application, which you have copies of, also asks for the owner's name and contact information, the manager's name and contact information. They have to swear or affirm on this. So, we could bring, haul them into a court of law and say, you're not owed this. You said you were going to pay it. Still litigation, years and, you know, possibly in duration, but we have the bus. Those buses that you're seeing, they're not old converted school buses. These are large coaches and they're anywhere from a quarter, help me out here, you know, knew they'd be probably 300,000. Is that right, Tracy? Or five? Okay. And so, most of them look pretty new and they want to get, they want to get here and they want to get back. So, let's say a quarter million dollars. We sit on that until we're repaid? We don't get to use the bus. We would have to impound it. We would be obligated to not use it. But that's, that's the plan. Now, that's the, is it written down that I can hand out? No, anymore than if there's a fire tonight at City Hall, we're all going to, we know what to do. We have professionals that respond. The ingredient we don't have is the community organization yet. So, this buys us some time. We're not prepared to receive people now. So, let's get prepared. Instead of the government being the first and the last, or the first solution, how about if we're part of the solution? It isn't just up to the government to fix this. And the people in this room, if they're serious about what they're saying, I'm going to trust that they are. They should be part of this. And they need to be heard. And people in this room can organize, I assume. We have a lot of leaders of organizations here. And I'd like to be the first one I call and say, let's have a meeting. Where are we going to meet? But tonight, I'm not going to sleep easy anymore than I did last night or the night before or any of our other department heads because we don't know what we're going to do at 2:00 in the morning. All of us have our phones and pagers and everything right by our bed. And I can tell you, four more days of this, if we have to go to the meeting on Monday night, we'll, we'll endure. But why? Why do we need to, what, what does that serve? So, I've explained, I've explained what's in the ordinance. The reason behind it is because we are thinking about the passengers and I have to tell you the consequences that should go to the bus company.
And to be clear, just, you covered quite a lot. We are looking at holding the bus company accountable financially for the work they're doing. If a migrant is here, asylum seeker is here, and they don't want to get on the transportation that we're providing to Chicago, they have that right. No one's forcing anyone to do anything here. Well, you've heard when I've called the state reps, senators, mayors, the asylum seekers want to get to Chicago. That's the goal. So, we need to figure out how we can help facilitate that.
Then what are we going to do for a person to decide? You know, it doesn't, you know, Chicago, like, as of today, it was, it was maybe a little bit of a down day, but every day is, as many people said, it's an enormous demand on, on social resources and financial resources. So, and the mayor of Chicago and the governor of the state of Illinois have been asking the federal government to help with that. And that, that is only going to get worse. Somebody said that in the audience tonight. I believe that's true. So, what are we going to be able to do? We will make sure that if a bus happened, happened to drop people off tonight, we would pick them up in one of our buses, a heated bus, and take them to a hotel or motel in our community. We have vetted this. Let them have a moment of respite, get through the night. And if they want to go to Chicago, we will take them to the train or otherwise make arrangements for them to get to Chicago.
While working with the city of Auburn.
While working with the city of Auburn, while working with, with the state of Illinois. Because in conversations I've had with the, the emergency manager, the emergency management director in the city of Chicago, they welcome communication. They said, all you need, what else could we do? Well, we'd like that. If you tell us there are going to be people coming, we want to be prepared. We want you to know where we want people to be dropped off. So, you can assure, you can be assured that we will do that.
Counsel, Alderman Perkins?
Sure. First and foremost, I apologize for my tardiness. Secondly, the, the involvement here is awesome. Don't lose the passion for this. This, this issue, it's horrible. It's a terrible thing. The last Bulls coach that took them to a championship had a saying, do your job. We're here because in Washington, everybody in Washington has not done their job. So, and within that, no pun intended here, my goal is to stay in my lane. My lane is to do my job here in DeKalb and to do what I can to, to support the city of DeKalb. City of DeKalb, we develop a strategic plan. We develop a budget and we do everything we can to stay within that budget. Nowhere in this is any of, any of this atrocious thing that's in front of us. That's why I say, don't lose the passion for this. You know, I think we are a welcoming community. We, we do. We've got an economic engine here to support things. But while the folks in Washington haven't done their job, I don't believe they have, they have provided a semblance of a process. The semblance of a process is they've declared sanctuary states and sanctuary cities where this activity is supposed to be taken care of. DeKalb is not a sanctuary state, is not a sanctuary city. We don't have, while we have a big heart for doing this, we don't have the resources to do it. It would overwhelm us. I think we need some time and some planning to do it. So, you know, is it happening quickly? Sure it is. Sure it is. But there are buses and planes that are, that are coming here quickly. Hundreds of thousands of people. Do we know they're coming here? I don't know anyone's coming here. But doing my job and staying in my lane, I need to look out for, for the citizens of DeKalb and doing, doing everything we can to keep in line with that strategic plan with achieving that budget. So, while it's quickly, I'm, I'm in support of this. I think we need to do something to get these folks where the, where the best resources are and they're in Chicago in my mind.
Counsel, comments, questions?
Go ahead. I mean, just to work off of what Alderman Perkins said, I mean, people want to go where resources are. And it sounds like part of the plan that the city has come up with theoretically is to get people to Chicago. But that's why I'm trying to figure out why we're focusing so hard on the bus system. I don't feel like that's the right answer. I feel like what this, you know, I respect what you're trying to do and what you're expressing that you're trying to do, but this is alienating. It's isolating and it's divisive. And it's an attempt to avoid this perceived burden of immigrants on the community. But what it's doing is telling people that they're, they're not welcome. It's telling people that we are not a community of belonging. And so, what I'm saying is, this isn't really built to be functional. Is, that's, that's my biggest struggle with this. So, if it's supposed to do what it says, what we're saying it's supposed to do, how on earth are we going to enforce this and pull money back from, from what you referred to as, what was it? Pseudo-legitimate and informal system of private companies moving migrants through? I mean, I don't see how we're going to be capable of pulling money back from these companies when we struggled to prosecute a local landlord system. What I'm saying is it's, it's not a solution. And if we've been talking about this for three or four weeks, why didn't we stand up a task force three or four weeks ago to identify our capacity and to see what we could do? That's a little bit more robust than this ordinance that I feel is full of holes and full of, a lack of solid policy creation. So, this is not, and we've talked about planning to facilitate travel to Chicago. This isn't a plan to facilitate travel to Chicago. We know that Chicago has more resources, but we also know that our surrounding communities have received resources to deal with this same struggle. So, you know, I mean, what, what happens if we write this ordinance and then the next thing that happens is we need to write a airplane ordinance next? Do we, you know, I, my grandfather was an immigrant. I would hate to think that he would have been turned away. That's all.
City Manager, did you have a response to?
Yeah, well, just a couple of things to clarify. So, the, as I said, and maybe I didn't make it clear, but the big lever here with the bus companies is the seizure of the bus. That's worth a lot of money. They're going to want the bus back and they will act quickly. Their lawyer will be calling this gentleman in 24 hours. How can this be? Let me, let me see the ordinance. I'm going to file suit, all the rest of that. But in the meantime, we've got their attention. I don't know that we would if it was just fines. So, that's why we set it up this way. That's a big piece of collateral. That's a big part of that ordinance.
I guess, I mean, I, my perspective is that they are tools in this much bigger cog, as one of our speakers said tonight.
And I said the same. So, this is a starting point. It's not the last point. It's not, it's not the highest- It's not, it's not the, the highest mountain we're gonna climb. But if, if we don't do this, let's say, four or five buses over the next week arrive, and we're immediately beyond the resources that we had a couple of years ago. And maybe those resources have increased a little bit, not much, in terms of being able to fund, because we need money. There are ways that we can, we've talked about a lot of things right now. If we had an overnight, that we, one night, we can do that with the city manager's authority. It might be 10,000 or less, okay? Because if you had 30 rooms for, and maybe, you know, families can have children in the room and so forth. But what if it's mostly not families and it's just people who are single? So, they're gonna have single rooms. And as we've talked to the local hoteliers, you know, they, I, I don't know if they give us a discount to start, but the, you know, we, we'd work on that. What they've said now is, what now, we were worried about was that would there be capacity, and there is capacity. But that would be tapped very quickly. So, now we've got people in rooms without any transportation. And, and you know, it grows. And then without, let's say they arrive here with everything that they have left in their lives. And they don't, and one of the things they don't have a lot of is money in their pocket. So, where does that come from? Hence, the need for some kind of community response, fundraising, whatever, if that's to be successful. We don't have that. It isn't because the city failed. It's, it's because it just is now, look, this meeting will help pique interest in this for a while, and it needs to have champions who will actually organize it. That's how that happens. People in this room, I know, I recognize the faces, work with some of them in disaster responses and other things. Sometimes it takes that kind of peaking of attention to get people to say, "Yep, I'm gonna do it. I'm committing my weekends. I'm committing three days a week." Anything is helpful in that regard. But money is also very helpful, very important, because the money will go quickly. We have, I, I'm loath to, to even mention this, but we would, I would never recommend that we take the next pot, which is beyond my, my authority, which is 20,000. And that is our, our local human services funding. There's a quarter million dollars in there. At the meeting on January 22nd is supposed to be up for your annual vote. Different sums, usually averaging around 10,000, eight to 10,000 per 35 different agencies locally. Mostly, the total that is applied for is far in excess of that 250,000. But there's 250,000. I wouldn't go very far. But if you take that, you beggar the ability of a lot of small agencies to continue operating or, or operating certain programs at a, at a certain level. So, I'm not recommending that. But then, where do we go? You know what I mean? So, you said a lot of communities are getting aid. They're not, that I'm aware of. Chicago is getting a lot because they need to, in the millions. Governor just established a $39 million fund. That's, I mean, for all intents and purposes, that's, that's marked right now. It's gonna go someplace else. It's not going to DeKalb.
And that was according to State Senator?
But I think we have to do something for our community, or we could be overwhelmed. Now, and I think there's a right way of getting these folks where their resources are. And then, once they reach that point, then, we'd love to have them, you know?
I think we heard, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I, I think we heard in the audience too, like, having the HRC review this. I agree. That could be a, a great conversation about long-term, how are we gonna handle migrants that come to our community and what services are out there? Again, also what we're talking about is the bus company right now. Imagine, right now, if a family kicked their eight-year-old out into the snow, would we just say, "Well, it's their prerogative," right? No. We'd hold that family accountable. DCFS would be involved. That's what we're talking about here tonight ultimately, is you come and dump a bunch of people like cargo into our community and don't expect any consequences? To me, that's ludicrous. And this is the consequence for something like that. It's about those companies that are treating people like they are right now. We wanna hold them accountable in the city of DeKalb. Yes, Alderman Larson?
A couple of things. I was taking notes from all the people that shared their, their thoughts. I think it's always easier to be proactive to a problem than reactive. The minute you're reactive, you're behind the eight ball, you're running to catch up. So, to at least get a first start as to how we wanna handle buses that show up in DeKalb the best way, to show a DeKalb face, that we're not just, "Now, what do we do?" And I so appreciate that the staff has started the process. And somebody said, "We need a comprehensive plan." Well, we do have one. It's not the best one, and it, there's holes in it. But we have a sanctuary city within 60 miles who gets more of the dollars, of dollars that are to be had. So, let's get them there. Let's get a start there. Can they come back here when, when they're starting to try to find a place to be a permanent drop zone for them and their lives? Or they have relatives, or they know, absolutely. But at the beginning, to get everybody processed, have, get them to where that at least is a start. Not the best, but it's a start. And, and so many people, who I believe were probably from churches or whatever, just because we have this thing about buses, you can still, as a congregation, let's, let's see what we can do to host families here. Let's see what we can do. You don't have to wait to be part of the, the public, this government source. You still can be your DeKalb, and your DeKalb, and your DeKalb, and reach out any way you can, whether it's collecting coats, whether it's sponsoring families, whether, whatever. Put your creative minds to use. You don't have to wait for something official. You can still be the good old Midwest people that we always are. Come up with a plan to help out any little way we can. And say, "Yeah, DeKalb wants to help to get you here." It, it still takes some kind of a network to make this all happen. And that's where we're, we're at now. We don't have that network. And maybe by keeping kind of control and keeping it accountable, by not just dropping, that we can have warning, that we can prepare for these buses, that's really what we're asking for. Is if a bus is gonna stop here, we need to be notified. So, we can prepare, so we can have the welcome that we want. And, and move them in the way we want. So that they get the best services that can be had at the moment. But then we can start working on what city manager talked about, getting all these wonderful, different organizations who are represented here, who be like, well, I had this old story about stone soup. And it was like, one person can't make the soup. But if you can give two potatoes, and you can give a couple of carrots, and you can give this, now you got a soup at the end of the day. And this is what we're gonna have to do. Not any one person's gonna solve it, but if we all can come together. But we have to keep things on our plan. And that's what I, why I am supporting this ordinance. That I think it'll keep people accountable till we can get the rest of this community, who is so loving and giving, to figure out what we can all offer to the best soup. So, when people do land here, we really can be who we wanna be. So, I'm in favor of this.
Are there questions, comments? Alderman Smith?
Um, I guess, my concern is, why are the buses and planes flying under, flying under the radar? As someone who was in law enforcement, and I think the chief will agree, why at 1:00 in the morning? Why not 9:00 in the morning? Has anybody thought about that? Are these drivers not being deceitful? A plane takes four hours max from any part of Texas. I know I fly it all the time. Why are they arriving at Rockford at 1:00 AM to a major shipping hub? Amazon, FedEx, et cetera, under the radar? You know, why is a bus pulling into these cities at 1:00 AM? Has anybody thought about that? Why not 9:00 AM? When the cities and the municipalities can actually handle the situation? So, I, I agree with his ordinance. It's giving control to us to say, "If you're coming here, don't do it at 1:00 in the morning. Don't stress the police department to its max. Don't stress the fire department to the max." Because I guess that's exactly where it'll occur. Also, I am one of the 37 organizations. Jennifer sent something out up, and I don't know if we responded. Actually, it is massive for us. I have probably one of the largest kitchens running for Meals on Wheels.
Voluntary Action Center.
Correct. Thanks. I don't know how we would do it. I really cannot tell you how I would handle that. I have, all said and done, how many do I subtract? Seven kitchens in five counties. They're maxed. So, how, you know, where's the food gonna come from? And I guarantee they've been riding on these buses. They're not eating. I'll guarantee they haven't eaten. We thought about them sleeping. Yeah, you can sleep on a bus. Who's gonna feed them? It's, you know, what's McDonald's gonna do? I mean, imagine McDonald's when those sports teams pull up, fall, they panic. I, I think this, this ordinance is just about more of establishing control. Not turning anyone away. I know we don't have back for meals. We're, our, we get state mandates all the time. There's no funding here, but we make it work with everybody sitting in this room. I'm done.
And I agree that 1:00 in the morning, this is the reindeer games that Texas is playing. They can have the bus go to Chicago, drop off at the landing zone, and those people are taken care of. That's where they're told they're going. But the games he's playing is causing this. Yes, Alderman Walker?
All right. Oh, man. So, I'm the little brother that, I guess, I know everybody's scared on the council. So, I guess I'm gonna start it today.
Not everybody.
I'm gonna get under your nerves. All right. Well, let's, a couple of weeks ago, I sat through a school board meeting, where grown people were creating their own narratives just so they could get something passed through that didn't make any sense to any grown person with common sense. Then on top of that, they had kids, kids, high school kids at board meetings trying to pass an agenda through that absolutely made no sense to me, and it made me furious. I didn't agree with Cohen talking at the beginning, but when he got to talking, he made a lot of sense. And I'm gonna get some stuff straight. I say what I want, and these are my words. Because a lot of people in this room, they care just for little pockets on certain agendas. That's what people do here. They care just about, you know, this side or that side. But here's my thing. You gotta care all the time about all the little important things. Because when you show up like this, for a man like me, it makes me not even wanna pay attention to some of the things you guys have to say that don't make any sense because you haven't did your homework or you do, uh, due diligence. Now, I'm gonna start with one thing. That man over there, I've been butting a lot of heads with him. But I can tell you one thing. Nobody in this goddamn room has been busting their ass to get, get, get all these things, you know, started in the right direction. The man can't sleep. He's always worried about what's gonna happen, the next move. I called the man at 5:30 in the morning. He's already up. Now, I'll bash him where he deserves it. But when he's doing the best job he can for the situation, I'm gonna give him his flowers. Period. That's the first thing. Now, you know, let's take a deeper dive into a lot of this because I know everybody's history majors all of a sudden, and everybody wants to take care of everybody, and I get it. I'm a black man. 49th Street, Indianapolis, Indiana. Came from the slums. Made it. Proud of myself. But let's, you know, let's, uh, let's talk about some of the reasons why, you know, these migrants are coming this way. We all know international policies cause, you know, socioeconomic problems that play their countries. We know that. It's, if you can read, you understand that. Venezuelan, Honduras governments, you know, were ripped apart. Caused inflation, caused horrible crime. It also caused, you know, just unbearable living, you know, just unlivable conditions. We know that. Those are the things we know. It's not like, you know, they just wanna come over here just to, you know, "Hey, I gotta get away. I wanna go to America and just enjoy, you know, the finer things." So, when it comes about humanity, yeah, we get that. Hey. Jennifer will tell you in the back, you know, "I, I have foundation, and I'm trying to take care of every kid in DeKalb." But it's impossible. A lot of these people have been to my, their kids have been to my camps. I get it. I get everybody wants to take care of everybody. I do. We all do. Everybody in this room, supposedly, if you have a good heart, you do. That's just who you are as a human. And if you're not, then you're a horrible-ass human. Now, it's not a matter of if we do or we don't want them here. Cohen spoke on that. Mayor Barnes spoke on that. It's not a matter of that. Let's, let's, let's not create our own narratives. Let's bring it back, everybody. Let's calm down and understand what we're trying to say and do. What we're trying to say is, we would love to have everybody here. Hell, you know I would. I would like to see more black people in DeKalb. That's just me. I would personally. But we, we have to remember, we don't have the resources to take care of these buses that would just drop these kids and these, and their parents off. Now, everybody says, "Well, you know, the city could do this, the city..." How can you make something out of absolutely nothing? If you guys can do it, then please let us know. And I'll try to get Cohen thrown out and get somebody up here to do it because there's just no way possible you can do that. Now, my thing is this. We have homeless people, and yep, and I always throw in, I'm a 26th veteran, UPS driver. Most of you people know my face, and, and most of you people know what I do in the community. And I'm gonna say this. I see kids, and what I mean kids, I have 24-year-olds and 23-year-olds and a 14. Kids, 24, 23, living on the street. We can't do nothing for them kids. But everybody wants to get, gather all together and, and get in the paper and start throwing shots about what's going on, and no one is just trying to, it's like this. We always worry about the macrocosm of things. If you stand back and start worrying about the microcosm, that's, you know, the smaller version of it, you get more things done. And is this the best ordinance? I mean, am I the best father? No. Are we the best council people? No. You could always work to get better. But let me tell you guys this. If you have all these surrounding cities and towns putting in rules and regulations, so they can get dropped off in those respective counties and towns, we're in the middle. So, how do you guys, anybody, please raise your hand? How do you think that we could take on 10 to 15 buses at 12:30 or 1:00 in the morning with kids and parents? Where we gonna put them? We can't even put the homeless kids up somewhere right now. So, where would you guys think? Now, if NIU called us, like, "Hey, we got, you know, four dorm buildings. We could throw them all in here, and we can get them fed and everything." Man, thank goodness, we're on it. I'll call in at 4:45 in the morning. We're on it. Nobody's doing that. And I know Jennifer's been working around the clock. Wanna know why? I tell my people my story. I go work out 5:30 in the morning, playing basketball. A lot of church people are there, a lot of people with some of these services, and they all ask me, "Jennifer called. Jennifer's doing it. Jennifer do..." "We can only take in so many. What are you guys gonna do?" You guys just, you guys just act like, "'Cause we're city council, we can just make everything happen? Like pulling rabbits out of a hat?" Now, it don't work that way. And that's why I ran, to, to, so people can understand, not create the BS narrative, but let's find a solution. And this is not the best solution, but it's the best for now. And we're gonna tweak it a little bit, 'cause you got to. That's just the name of the game. You don't just throw something out there and expect it to stick. Right now, we're just, how I look, and you know what? I don't, I'm the first one to call the man. I was like, "What are we gonna do if this happens right here?" He'll tell you. Hey, he knows me. I, I don't, that's just who I am. What are we gonna do? 'Cause we have X, Y, and Z that we have not taken care of. But you mean to tell me, if we get a bus four or five, I don't care if it's one bus, how are we just gonna let certain people just skip the line and, and just jump to the front when all these other people have just been scrounged, just trying to make it? That don't make no sense to nobody here. You guys would be offended if, if you was the one that got skipped in the line. So, I, I mean, you know, I'm not running for anything, and I'm, and, and I don't care about all the extra stuff. I ran because I wanna make this town a better place. But guess what? I took the oath to serve the people of DeKalb first. That's my job. Whether you like it or not. Now, I'll be honest, I don't trust our police station to handle them with the respect that they should just because I don't trust the police station. But they're all we got right now. It's just what it is. Period. So, you know what? We can always throw, you know, darts at people and say this, or we can do that, or we can get government funding, we can do this. But like, and I've done my due diligence with this, and I would love to talk to anybody on the side whenever you... this and I would love to talk to anybody on the side whenever you want, but I haven't heard of any surrounding counties or towns getting any money. In fact, what I have heard is they get promised money, you pay for it, then the government pays you back when they get around to it. But by that time, the services that the people in those towns need, they're gone. It's not hard. My wife's got all the degrees. I got a junior college one. It's not that hard to real, to, to, to just use your mind and to see what's really going on. I wish we can get everybody here, yes. But for right now, we just have to scale back and we just have to put rules and regulations in. So, guess what? Our town is taken care of and those people are taken care of the right way. And would anybody here just want a family of five just thrown in and, and broke up and the mom and dad is over there, there's little sister over here, the son, like, do you guys get, that's what, that's what's happening? And that's what we don't want to happen. It's not about, we don't want you here because you're black, you're Mexican, you're, you're white, whatever. That's not, that's what some of you are trying to make it and I see it. I can see it and I see through the BS. We're not going to do that right here. We're not doing that. We're going to keep the facts where the facts need to be, because guess what? Keep doing that BS, then we're never going to get forward on any of this. I'm just, it, it, it just, it just makes me upset when, 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 when we go that route. Because I could do that all day, all, all damn day. I could do it all day. Nah, man, we're not doing that. We're going to get in the right direction. And this starts and I support it, because it starts it. Is it perfect? No. Do we need to do some other things to make it right? Hell, yes. But let's quit doing these, this, these BS narratives, just to throw stones and, and just to call people out of their name and, and some of the BS emails that we're receiving. Remember, we're grown people first, with families and kids. And I'm a man first, so I want you some, because some of you guys send some of the BS emails to us. Hey, listen, we're not going to read all the BS. We're getting to the facts of what needs to be done from here on out, just so you understand, period. I'm sorry, council.
No worries.
And, and, and we have to be better. We all have to be better, me included.
Yep, everyone, 100%. Any other comments or questions, Alderman, Mrs. Zada?
Thank you.
So, what I'm hearing from Alderman Walker is that we can't take care of these people. And what I'm hearing, this ordinance has nothing to do with the people. We're talking about the buses here in this ordinance. And the ordinance is absolutely misplacing what we're trying to do. So, what I'm seeing with this ordinance, we're still saying that we're going to help these people get to Chicago. We're still saying that that's the plan, that's our plan, whether, whether we have the option to impound the bus or not. We're still going to incur that fee. We're having trouble catching speeders on Ridge Drive, Fairview Drive and Ridge. How are we going to impound buses? Isn't this just an opportunity to say, hey, actually, we're going to impound it, so make sure you go somewhere more discreet? I'm just saying, this is not a solution and this is not how I want to see people treated and this is not the side of history that I want to be on.
You know, I hear you. I don't know how many mayors you called, state reps you called, state senators you called, to find out the, the reality of what's transpiring and the effectiveness of an ordinance like this. I, I don't know that. What I've heard across the board is, when these ordinances are implemented, it doesn't happen in your community. The ultimate goal of so many of these municipalities out there is, it's the games of the governor of Texas right now that he's playing. There is a sanctuary city that will take these people and it's ultimately where they want to go. The harder we make it for these games to be played, the more the migrants, asylum seekers can get where they need to be, which is the city of Chicago. So, from what I'm hearing, this is incredibly effective for the overall goal. It's one piece, more needs to happen, for sure, but to help make it difficult where we don't play the reindeer games of some governor so far away and people ultimately get to where they need to be to get the services that they need. Alderman Walker.
I just asked all the person, so Zada, like, okay, let's say they drop off four busloads. Right now, what are we doing? Like, 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 where could we put them? Hey, it's like, where could, where could they be housed? Who can feed them the money? Has anybody ever thought about the kids going to school? Like, do we have enough ELL teachers to even, you know, support, you know, the influx of, 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 of school kids? Listen, we, it's just so many things. And listen, if they're, that they're going to Chicago, then if we're helping them get to Chicago, aren't we doing them a favor?
Correct. We are doing them a huge favor.
Like, I mean, personally, hey, if I could go to Chicago versus DeKalb, if I'm from out of town, let's go to Chicago. Go to the, you know, the signature room or something like that. It's just, I don't know, man, it's just.
So, at this point, I, I think it'd be good, we can just go ahead and call the vote on this. You know, my final comment is, I really do believe a, a vote against this ordinance is a support of the games that are being played in the state of Texas right now. I'm tired of it. Everyone I've talked to in the suburbs, the collar counties, including many in this community, we're all tired of it. All's what we want to do is just our small part. And again, if you're going to have a company that's going to kick kids to the curb, there should be consequences to that. Ultimately, that's what this ordinance is. So, at this point, go ahead and call roll.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zada?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five aye?
All right, the ordinance passes, which is ordinance 2024-01 passes on first reading. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. All right, we are adjourned.
Oh, city manager? Just, just an announcement to the people in the audience. So, this will come back for second reading on Monday night.
Monday, yep.